It's four o'clock. I'd like to go ahead and call this February 14th meeting of the Salina City Commission order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Peck.
Here.
Commissioner Angel.
Here.
Commissioner Jennings.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Vanier.
Here.
Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
It's time for the Citizens' Open Forum right now, which is a time that anyone from the public can come up and express any questions or comments they might have. If you'd come forward, please, and I would like to specify that I'd appreciate if any comments or questions did not pertain to anything on today's agenda.
No, I don't believe so.
If you could just state your name and your address.
Dennis Benoit. I live 1773 20th Road over out of Kannapolis.
Okay.
But I was born in Salina, so.
Okay.
I'm here to hopefully raise an issue about the safe drinking water. I heard this morning when I checked over at the Water Department that the City Commission had voted to fluoridate the water. I'm pretty sure it wasn't you guys. And so, I don't know how many years ago, I think it was probably 1957 or something when they first put it in. I believe it's time to review the facts, review the new findings, and, you know, take it out of the water.
Okay.
And, because the thing I found out within the last couple of days, as of November 2006, the American Dental Association suggested parents should not, or parents should avoid giving babies fluoridated water. So, we're putting it in the water, and I was never, I don't know if you have a policy or somebody to inform the people about, well, children shouldn't, under six shouldn't brush their teeth. So, I just think it's overdue policy unless, have they reviewed it lately? Do you know, or?
Martha Tasker would be the person that could comment on this best, and if, whenever you're done with your comments, I'd invite Martha to come up and perhaps comment on that.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
We actually have been following along with all of the information on fluoridizing the water. We currently do add fluoride to the water. We shoot for one milligram per liter, so we're somewhere between .9 and 1.1. And currently, it is in our code to do that. And we've actually been looking at some of the new recommendations on that and have made, have had discussions amongst employees in my department and just starting to gather data, but we're aware of that.
Okay.
How long has our water been fluoridated, just out of curiosity?
I don't know if I can tell you. For years and years and years, the equipment's been at the water plant since the mid-eighties that I'm aware of. Prior to that, I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
No problem, just curious, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we'll move on to awards and proclamations.
Item 4.1, the week of February 20, 2011, as National Engineers Week in the city of Salina. Wayne Nelson, President-Elected of the Smoky Valley Chapter of the Kansas Society of Professional Engineers, will read the proclamation.
Hello, Wayne.
Mr. Mayor, proclamation of the city of Salina, Kansas. Whereas engineers have used their scientific and technical knowledge and skills in creative and innovative ways to fulfill society's needs, and whereas engineers face the major technological challenges of our time, from rebuilding towns devastated by natural disasters to designing an information superhighway, and whereas engineers are encouraging our young math and science students to realize the practical power of their knowledge, and whereas we will look more than ever to engineers and their knowledge and skills to meet the challenges of the future. Whereas this year's theme for the event is Engineers Turning Ideas Into Reality. Now, therefore, I, Aaron G. Peck, Mayor of the city of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of February 20 through February 26, 2011, as National Engineers Week in the city of Salina, and I urge all citizens to pay appropriate tribute to the engineers in our community for their contributions to our health, safety, and witness, and welfare. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this 14th day of February 2011.
Thanks, Wayne. You guys have any special events to recognize next week?
Yes, we do. And this is the 60th anniversary of Engineers Week. Activities that the Smoky Valley Chapter has already partaken in include the Math Counts Competition, which was held last weekend, not this past Saturday, but the Saturday before. We had eight teams with 63 students from the surrounding area. We had teams from Manhattan, Salina, southeast of Saline, Trinity Catholic in Hutchinson, Newton, and Washington. The state competition will be held at the K-State Salina campus on March 5th. The top three teams from our own regional advance to that state competition, and the top six individuals also advance to the state. The, we've had members of the Smoky Valley Chapter participate in the regional Future Cities Competition, which was held at K-State and Manhattan on January 22nd. Those teams competing were from Kansas and Missouri. And we were proud to have one of the area teams place third in that Future Cities Competition. That team came from Concordia. And then, next week, on the 22nd, the chapter will have a awards dinner.
Very good. Well, thank you, and I have a signed copy of this proclamation for you.
Okay, and I also have some Engineering Week buttons for you.
Great.
I have all of mine.
Where are the profit?
I sure will.
Thank you.
That's all.
I'll have to double-check, but I know I wasn't ever invited to be on that Math Counts team. I don't know what the criteria is. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of February 7, 2011. Item 6.2, resolution number 116804, authorizing agreement for an audit of city records for the year ending December 31, 2010. Item 6.3, award a contract for the 2011 crack-in joint ceiling, project number 112850, to Missouri pavement maintenance in an amount of $264,942.48 with a 5% construction contingency.
Is there an item on here that a commissioner would like to see removed or has a question regarding? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. Moving on to development business.
Item 7.1, application number PDD 11-1, requesting approval of a preliminary final development plan and a change in zoning just a classification from PC 1 to PDD R 2.5 on property addressed as 715 North 9th Street. Sub-Item 7.1A, first reading ordinance number 11-10,590.
Mayor, I need to recuse myself from this discussion and vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Back in January of 2007, the City Commission approved an ordinance that rezoned the former Hawthorne School Site to Plan C1 to allow for office suites similar to what occurred at Bartlett School on South 9th Street. You're well aware that the plan that was approved at that time did not pan out, and the building has remained vacant for some time. That particular plan and ordinance that was approved was tied to reuse of the existing building. So, the applicants, in this case, wholesale property services have applied to change the zoning from the office classification to Plan Development District R 2.5, which is identical to the zoning that they have at the reserves at Prairie Glen property on South Ohio. If this request is approved, they plan to complete their purchase of the property from the bank, remove the existing school building, and they would construct two new apartment buildings along 9th Street in Phase 1. The third building along 10th Street is a future Phase 2 and would be dependent on lease-up and the marketing of the property. This is an infill property, and one of the advantages is that water and sewer services are in place, so there's no need for upgrades or extensions of utilities. The engineering department was concerned that this plan does increase the site coverage from what was there as a school building, and so, an engineer has been at work submitting a report on what the impact of this additional construction and parking would have on-site runoff, and that is under review. Planning Commission reviewed this plan and, on the 1st of February, approved it, subject to the conditions that you see in your report there, and they were in favor of this particular plan because it does provide affordable housing units on an infill property that's currently vacant. The current zoning inhibits redevelopment of the site. Development with multifamily dwellings will not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood or properties. There are public facilities and services in place, and this location is consistent with the locational preferences for multifamily housing and the comprehensive plan. So, what you have before you is an ordinance that incorporates the site plan that you have in your packets, and your first option would be to concur with the Planning Commission's recommendation and approve that zoning change on first reading. You have other options there that we can go into if you have questions, but this is coming with the recommendation to approve the plan as submitted.
Thank you. Questions of staff?
The only thing I would note, which is not related to the zoning, but there was some discussion at the Planning Commission meeting, that appears that the city has put up a fence at the south side of the spray park there, and both Planning Commission and developer wanted to encourage looking at removal or at least creating a gate in that fence so there could be a sidewalk connection between the apartment complex and the spray park. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment?
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
There's just a couple of things that I'd like you to consider when, when passing the approval for this. One of the things that I pointed out to the Planning Commission was, it was in comparison to Hawthorne as to where the location was and the fire and safety hazards. A concern that I have is that when Hawthorne was open, there wasn't a kitchen in Hawthorne, and so, the fire hazards weren't as great as what they will be. And I would ask that the Commission consider what that may or may not do. They did answer my questions with the overload on the public schools. With the impervious surfaces, there is kind of a concern, just because we already have a lot of flooding on the north side of Salina, and so, I was happy to hear that they were looking into that more. As far as with the park, and this is a concern that I've raised for a while, but one of the concerns that I have with that is that a park is going to be available to the people who rent from these properties. They do create their own park, or they are making their own park, and that's one of the entities that they offer. My fear is that this is going to, one, overpopulate the city park that's currently there because it's not one of the larger parks. But also a concern that I have is in removing that fence, I'm not for sure that children will have a fine, a good definition of what's trespassing and what's not trespassing, because these are private properties, and it would be so close to, or essentially on the same property as what a city park is. And so, I would urge you to consider that when you consider joining the city park and that property as well. And I've made my stance on how I feel about apartments going in there. The last thing I'd like you to consider is that there aren't crosswalks, so that the children who are going to be living there can get back and forth from the other side of the streets to where the churches are, gas stations. In order to come to the public library, they'll have to walk all the way down 9th Street and then pass on Elm, and also cross railroad tracks in order to do that. And I feel like this, that may be a reason that we haven't previously had multi-homes in that area, as there aren't many in the area. So, I would just encourage you to consider those things, and I think that if this is a $4 million project, $4 million project, and it's so great for Salina, I think it's really important that we get it right when it's done, as opposed to saying we'll figure it out when we get to that point. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any additional public comment today? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve PDD R-2.5 zoning for the property known as 715 North Street and approve the applicant's preliminary development plan as submitted. Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve everything contained in ordinance number 11-10590. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes three to zero. Commissioner Vanier accusing himself.
That one action does cover everything, Greg?
I believe so.
Okay.
Looking at Mr. Andrew to be sure that I was...
Busy with Mr. May. What was the question?
I'm sorry. There was some question up here as to whether, that the one action of approving the entire ordinance does cover everything, correct?
Yes, it includes the plan and the underlying zoning for the property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to development, excuse me, on to administration.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance number 11-10,589, requesting vacation of a 20-foot north-south utility easement located on Lot 5, Block 1 of the Great Plains Edition.
This ordinance was passed on first reading on February 7th. Since that time, no comments have been received. Are there any comments today? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 11-10589 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt ordinance number 11-10589 on second reading. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel.
Aye.
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vanier.
Aye.
Mayor Peck.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero.
Item 8.2, authorized purchase of an ambulance.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. First of all, I want to tell you, I got a phone call a second ago from my wife, and she got her Valentine's Day flowers, so I'm feeling, I'm feeling pretty good.
Just made it.
Second thing, second thing's in pri-
For sharing.
There you go. Second thing's in priority is taking care of this ambulance. We, over the last two or three years, we've been, really been in flux and dealing with a changing situation in the chassis and motor industry brought on by the manufacturers, whether it's Dodge, Ford, what have you. That industry has gone through some changes in the chassis that are available to build ambulances on. And to, really, to make a long story short, we, for many years, we've used Fords, E350s and E450s as the backbone, backbone of the ambulance fleet. Ford decided to quit making that chassis and a diesel engine option. They do have a gasoline engine option, but they are not well-suited for ambulances because of the idle time, they have tendency to overheat, and things of that nature. So, the ambulance industry as a whole kind of steers away from that. Last year, we bought two ambulances, two Chevrolet 4500 chassis, and you may have seen them around town. They're a much larger ambulance than what we've had in the past, and that was, that too was driven by a lack of chassis at the time. The 4500s were available from Chevrolet. They seemed to fit the bill for a good reliable unit diesel, all of that. And then, we buy those two units, and Chevrolet phases out the 4500. And so, it sent us back to the drawing board looking at this ambulance purchase. We actually were looking at buying two ambulances this year. With the, with the exit of the 4500 Chevrolet, we had to go back and look at the different manufacturers, and today I have with me Battalion Chief Scott Abker, who's our Battalion Chief in charge of our vehicles, specifications, and things of that nature. Scott can pretty much handle a lot of the technical questions. And Greg Brockway, our Chief of VMS, is here this afternoon with me also to talk about the uniqueness of this ambulance, because, like I said, we originally started out to buy two ambulances. When we bid those units as a pair, we also asked for a bariatric option. And the bariatric option is for heavy, overweight or obese patients. We do not have a ambulance equipped currently to do that sort of thing. And what that is, that's a, that's a larger cot, larger opening in the truck, things of that nature. Today, our society is faced with a growing, I hate to say epidemic, but it's pretty true, of obesity and overweight, and we're hauling patients of a greater weight, we're taking them down stairways, around corners, and loading them into ambulances, and things of that nature. We try to do that in a sensitive manner and deal with each person's needs. One of the pieces of equipment we need is a, is a bariatric ambulance, because it does make it easier on our crews to load and unload those patients. That's part of the reason why people see fire trucks at ambulance calls, is the fact it takes a number of people to move those people onto a cot, around the corners, and down and out in the street, and then load them in an ambulance. Two people just cannot do that and keep up patient care. Anyway, back to the ambulances that were bid. We bid two units, and you can see in the left-hand column of the table where the bids came back in. The lowest unit, or the lowest bid, and you see the bariatric options out there in the middle column of the report, was Lifeline, RME. And Lifeline, and Scott can go into more detail if you want to, Lifeline essentially creates, or bid, a unit that has plywood cabinets in it. And we, our specifications require hard surface cabinets, like aluminum and things of that nature. It just makes it easier for us to take care of the unit. It seems like the longevity is better for us, it fits our duty cycles better, and a lot of people would have some questions with wooden cabinets in, in ambulances, even though they are covered with, with vermicor or hard material. They just, in our experience, don't stand up quite as well. The second, the second lowest unit was American Response. That unit did not have a bid bond that came in. You know, we require all of our bidders to submit a bid bond at the time, that they can fulfill the promise that they make when they make that bid. And part of that, part of that reason not only is to ensure the backside of that, that we get the unit at the right price and the right quality and things of that nature, but also, that whole process requires them to all operate off the same page. And so, for whatever reason, American Response decided not to submit a bid bond with their bid, which essentially disqualified their bid because they didn't follow the bid procedures. The next lowest unit was Road Rescue. Road Rescue came in at the, at the third lowest bid, and was the recommendation of the Fire Administration with the collaboration of Chief Abker and Chief Brockway. That is our recommendation to buy the Road Rescue unit. But the problem we have is we can't buy two of them. The pro, the cost of each one going to the larger chassis is more than we have allocated. And honestly, one of the best things that we have, and citizens probably are not that aware of, is a working relationship between the city of Salina, City Commissioners, your group, and the county commissioners, and the fact that, in operating the CMS service countywide, the county sets aside money to buy these ambulances. That's one of the things that they contribute to that and help provide the service, which is one of the most outstanding services in the state of Kansas. And so, they budget for that. They budgeted $168,000 last year, and the reason we didn't buy a unit last year is because they were in flux, that chassis arrangement was in flux, so we couldn't step out there and buy one because we didn't know what we were buying. And so, when it finally come down that we could specify a chassis or engine or things of that nature this year, we were looking at buying two. So, we had $168,000 from last year, last year, and $188,000 from this year to buy a unit. And those together, combining that $168,000 and $188,000, we'll not buy two of these ambulances, we'll buy one. And so, I asked to meet with Rod France, and Rod was kind enough to have Rita Ditzer, the county administrator, come over, sit down, and talk about a path forward. You know, since we can't buy two, what's going to be our path forward? And we can buy one by combining the funds, we can buy one now, which would be a good thing for us. The real caveat with these larger trucks is the fact that they will have a longer service life. You know, normally, our ambulances run about seven years, and then we trade them out and they move on. Part of the reason for doing that is wear and tear. You know, there's wear and tear on them, a lot of idling miles. They don't have a lot of, when I say a lot of road miles, they'll have 130, 140,000 road miles, but they have a whole lot of idling time. I mean, that's, that's just the name of the game, as you're loading and unloading patients and things like that. Those engines run quite a while. So, as we look at the longevity of the units, what really, one of the things that people don't realize is, what pushes an ambulance into obsolescence, not only is the wear and tear on the drivetrain, the engine components, idling time, and things of that nature, but also the technology changes. Technology changes as fast in the medical world in how we treat, communicate with the hospital, as it does in, in the world of computers, pretty much, you know. Most people don't operate today with a seven-year-old computer and things of that nature. They generally have to upgrade after that many years. The same with ambulances. There are, there are changes and upgrades in ambulances, that in order to keep up with those changes, we need to keep up with replacing our units. So, we need to at least buy one unit. And we also talked about, well, what, you know, what does the future hold? Do we go over three years and accumulate three years worth of money to buy two ambulances, and then, down the road, look at how the longevity of these larger units may help offset some of the yearly costs and get into a year or two that we may not have to buy an ambulance based on the years? That's what we think will happen. We think that these larger units, instead of serving seven years, will go eight, nine, possibly 10 years. That's not to say we might have put some money into them here and there for electronic upgrades and things of that nature, but there is that possibility. The other thing that we wanted to look at, and we're not sure how this is going to work out right now, is look at a much smaller ambulance for transfers only that are perhaps non-emergency. And there's a much smaller unit called a Sprinter that we might have use for. In, in a specific instance, it may be a very good unit, but the problem of it is the Sprinter is so small that the patient sets up on one side of the ambulance instead of having patient access from both sides, and it becomes critical, and a critical ill patient, that we have access from both sides of that patient, because we're doing a lot of things between the two medics and things of that nature that occur simultaneously. So, stacking them up against the wall just creates a real, real problem for us. But we want to look at the Sprinter. We're going to go, Chief Abker's going to go out and look at that unit and, and see if, if that's going to work for us, and collaborate with Chief Brockway, and we may at some point in the future come back and try to buy a Sprinter unit as a trial, just to try it in certain applications, see if it will work. Those units are down around $100,000. We, we guess at this point. We think they'll be down around $100,000. But, like I say, that is a very unique application for that. So, we're recommending, after meeting with Rita Ditzer and looking at the funds available, we're looking at buying one unit, one ambulance this year, and then taking the unit that we were going to trade in and giving to the police department. They, they have a need for this unit being cycled out, that they can use it for their special response team, go in and strip the stuff out of it, reconfigure the box. They may do several different things to it, but it would serve in that capacity. So, therefore, we were going to get about a $4,000 trade-in, and we set that aside. In fact, Rod was going to, to decrease the county share basically by $4,000. I mean, I say that quite right, but we're going to give him a credit for that, that we would have got- we would have gotten off of a trade-in and hand that unit down to the Police Department. Are there any questions I could answer with this bid recommendation?
Questions?
This is a yes or no answer, okay? Did I hear you correctly in saying that you bought two units last year?
Yes.
And you were supposed to buy two units this year?
Well, the two units last year were from previous years, because again, this has been like a three-year process. They were in flux, starting four years ago. And so, three years ago, we bought two units. Not last year, but the year previous.
Okay.
Additional questions? Are you going to be thinking that going forward, all new units are going to have bariatric capacity?
No.
How do you, in an emergency situation, how do you know whether or not you need that particular unit?
Well, what we will do is, we, we can use a standard, we can use a standard cot in emergencies if we have to, if we actually have to. But if we're going to arrange a transfer or to move somebody, say, say we get to a house and, and somebody is non-critical, but we need to transport them to the hospital.
Okay. So, that's where the use is really going to come in more
Right.
handy, okay. Further questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any public comment today? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the purchase of a bariatric ambulance from Road Rescue Firefox in the amount of $213,733.
Second?
It's been moved in second that we approved the purchase of a bariatric ambulance from Road Rescue/Firefox in the amount of $213,733. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Item 8.3, receive and review the 2009 audit report.
Mr. Franz?
Negotiate all the traffic, there are people leaving. We have completed the 2009 audit report from Lowenthal Webb and Oderman. Once again, and it is a clean opinion, unqualified opinion, meaning that the audit, the financial reports are presented in conformance with generally accepted accounting procedures. Other than that, I would have to say it's unremarkable. And we do have a representative here from the firm, if he wants to say anything, or if you have questions for him, so.
Thank you. Were there, were there questions of staff? Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here today. Is there any public comment? Greg, have we officially received this? Do we need to?
No, I think, I don't think any further formal action is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8.4, award a contract for the wastewater treatment plant capital maintenance improvements, project number 10-2843.
Ms. Asker?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The last major upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant occurred in 1993, which is nearly 20 years ago. Certain process equipment and building components are near the end of their service life and require replacement or rehabilitation. The major components of the project are replacing a pump at the screw pump station, replacing eight slide gates at the headworks and UV buildings, rehabilitation of the digester complex, including replacing the sledge heater, and then roof replacement at buildings number five and 10. It is difficult to determine the full extent of the work for this project without removing the process equipment and the building components. This project, we believe, can best be completed on a cost-plus-fixed fee method, meaning the contractor is paid only for the work completed plus a fixed fee, which in this case is 10%. Walters Morgan Construction Incorporated was selected for the project in an amount not to exceed $725,445. This upper limit cannot be exceeded without written authorization. Budget allocations of $805,000 for these maintenance improvements are included in the 2010-2011 capital improvement program. Staff recommends that the City Commission award the contract for the wastewater treatment plant capital maintenance improvement project number 10-2843 to Walters Morgan Construction Incorporated, Manhattan, Kansas, in the amount not to exceed of $725,445. I would be glad to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Thank you. Questions of staff?
Martha, a few years ago, there was a, an EPA ruling or something coming down the line that was going to require that we upgrade the wastewater treatment plant to meet certain specs by the EPA. Where is that in the works? And will any of this work that you're doing now be wasted work if that should come to fruition?
The, in fact, that's why we're a little slow at doing some of these projects. They've been on the improvements schedule for a couple of years. We wanted to confirm that what that study required, none of this work would be wasted, or it's something that we had to do to get by for this timeframe. I think currently, we have the design for the wastewater treatment plant in the 2013 budget, with construction to follow between 2015 and 2017.
Okay. And so, none of this will be duplicated, or?
No. These, these will be items that we need to reuse.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Further questions? Thank you. Is there any public comment? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mayor, I move that we award the contract for wastewater treatment plant capital maintenance improvements, project number 10-2843.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second that we award project number 10-2843 to Walters Morgan in an amount not to exceed $725,445. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Item 8.5, award of contract for the Smoky Hill River Bank stabilization, project number 092754.
Mr. Stack?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This project first came to you on January 10th. At the time, we had received bids that were in excess of the budget and the estimate, so we had to work with the low bidder to actually look at some different options. And we did that. Smoky Hill Contractors has some recycled concrete that seems to be workable in this situation. They've been able to separate it and sort it, and break it in a fashion that will work and meet the requirements that are necessary for the rock sizing. And we met with them on-site and in the office a few times to look at the solutions that they'd come up with. And so, it definitely reduces the project cost and gives us a better chance of success as far as the budget goes on this project. Another thing that did, that has been in the works for a while, and that does, when we're talking hitting the number here and getting the right amount of money, actually a partnership with KDHE, and this is actually a RAPS group, so it's a little bit confusing exactly. It's through K-State, through EPA grants, through a lot of details that I can get into. And Ron Graber is here today if we need to get into that. But bottom line is, they were able to help us with some funds to plant some of the trees and some of the restoration, as well as make it an education and, what do you call it, demonstration project, basically. It's in a high-profile area with the soccer field there. It has quite a few little trails in the area that people go out to the river. And so, they would see this project, and it would be a demonstration of bank stabilization in the lower Smoky Hill basin, basically. And that's why they feel like this is a good project and are willing to put up some funds for it. And if this project goes, then that will occur. So, I guess that's, I can just entertain questions at this time.
Questions of staff?
Has the adjacent property owners seen the samples of, of what you're proposing to use, and have, has everybody bought off on it?
They have not.
They have not seen it, or they haven't bought off on it?
They haven't, neither. They have not. The piles are at Smoky Hill's facility, and they have not been out there to look at those, no. We would have to, and basically, it's, you know, big rocks, and instead of coring them, it's concrete, and we'd have to cut the rebar off and make sure they're acceptable. But yeah, that's, they have not seen that, no.
So, you anticipate no problems then, or you're just taking a wild stab at this?
We've talked with Frank about this quite a bit, and they're, they're pretty excited about the, the project going forward, and recycled concrete was a fair option to him and to the, to the, to the, to who we talked to, I mean, Frank. But as far as whether the rest of the group would be okay with that, that we have not entertained that option.
May prompt a question, which is, let's say that, as part of that, if the commission says, let's go ahead and move forward with the bid, we know what the cost is to go back to the original materials.
Correct.
And if the property owners there are not, not happy with these materials, we know we have stabilization that needs to be done, possibly then prompts us to request additional funding come from private sources.
And most of this rock will be at the water level, so it's not going to be, not a lot of it will be exposed. It's in the water, basically, holding up the dirt that needs to be stabilized, basically. So, it's, I guess, that's the thing, you're not going to see a lot of rock on the slope. You're going to see mostly rock on the bottom and a stabilized slope of dirt, more or less with trees and grass and restoration.
So, Dan, regardless of the funding source, if, if we, if, if they award this, and we would decide to go back to the original materials, safe to say that the contractor would allow this to be with approval, to be change-ordered back up to what the original bid was with those materials? So, have an option for the commission if, for whatever reason, this isn't acceptable?
Okay, thanks.
Dan, I was going to ask you, in the presentation we had on this, one of the specific slides was, you know, in the past, a method for stabilizing banks was to throw concrete on there, and you pointed out that what happens is, the water just goes around it and continues to erode.
Right.
But this is exactly what we're doing.
Okay.
And so, I was curious as to how this application will be different.
Different, okay. Yeah, the, the plans call for a, basically a, you basically pile rocks in the river, bottom, along the edge of the river, and they, they cone up, and then you fill the backside in with, with trees and dirt, basically. And so, it's, it's an engineered solution to stabilizing a bank. In the past, a lot of people just throw things onto the bank, and that, that is somewhat sufficient, if you can get the gradation to work and the sizes of the rock to be a certain size. But if you have just big, big slabs of concrete, those, those do not work, and they either float away, or the water just turbulence around them. So, in the case of the recycled concrete, it's, it's a green solution, because they can break it, they can break it into the sizes that are necessary, and we'll have to be on-site to watch that as well. And, you know, certain pieces that are either too big or not the right, you have, they can't be too long, or basically, they can't be real thin and narrow, or, you know, flat and long. We'll just have to, we'll have to monitor that the entire time. And the engineer that, or the designer says that shouldn't be an issue, and Smoky Hill said, yeah, we can break them into the sizes that's necessary, and we kind of have, this is the pile we need to look like. So, there, it seems to be the, the direction we're headed anyway. That's why it's going to work this time.
Are you filling in the backside, then, with trees?
Mm-hmm.
And that is part of this plan as well?
That's part of the plan, yes. And the RAPS group that we talked about will help a lot with that process, because whether we plant live stakes, or seed, or, you know, how many trees, that'll, that will be able to help a lot with that, with that process.
Now, from an engineering standpoint, how do trees, I understand live trees, how do, how do trees stabilize a bank but potentially deteriorate a levee?
Levee? Yeah, that has been...
In the, in the spirit of Engineers Week.
Yes. Yeah, that's a good question.
I understand, I mean, I, I guess I understand that as long as they're alive, that adds stabilization, but I'm assuming just in the, in the event that they can die and decay and erode, that's really where the major...
Yeah, on, on the levee, it's, it's just more crucial that they can be saturated and knocked over, which then creates a big hole in the levee, which is a conduit for water. And so, the roots also, if they die, then the roots are a conduit for water as well. So, that's why it's just best to keep trees off of the levee. There is, there is a contingent of people who believe they help a levee, but so far the chorus said, no, keep them off the levee. Now, riverbanks are a different issue. They do stabilize riverbanks, and the, and the right kind of trees help to stabilize the, the bank and the soil, basically. So, it's, that's why in the river, they're better. Near a levee, they're not as good.
Yeah, Commissioners, the other aspect possibly is the type of soil you have, the subsoil under there. For example, if you have sandy soils, that makes it easier for the water to find its way. And if you have, again, say, trees on both sides, and they die and they tip over, and that sand in between actually brings those, brings that, those openings a little bit closer. So, sandy soil with that in situation would probably be worse than a other type of soil that would, would hold, hold in and compact and, and not be moved as much by the water in that same situation as well.
And Ron Graber is here, and they've done a lot of these type of projects over the years, and most notably, the Land Institute had one done, not too far from here. So, that was one that we were glad to hear about, that we'd like to even go look at before this project. But it's, these are common in this, in this watershed in ways to, they're expensive. That's the only, that's the main thing. There's not a lot of them being done, because they're expensive. But this process seems to work.
The Land Institute utilized the concrete as well, or not?
I don't know. Do we know on that, Ron?
Okay, they used rock, okay. Was there, was there any further questions?
I just, real quick, Dan, looking at this picture, and, and I apologize for not being up to speed on this, but
That's right.
The blue line is, is the back edge of the stabilization, and so, you're going from blue line down to the river?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, see, we put the blue line on there just to be kind of a baseline for basically the edge of, of where the stabilization is going to occur.
Okay. Was there ever any talk that a river will always find a straight line, and about the other side of the bank, where the soccer complex is, that little bend that sticks out there?
Yeah, actually, this project, I mean, we should have put that on there. To the west, we're doing an actual stabilization on the, on the city side to try and keep it
To take the bend out?
No, we're not taking it out, we're just trying to stabilize it to keep it from moving at this point. Because it's, it's, we're trying to stabilize the east side, and then to stabilize the west side there on the lower, I guess it'd be the lower portion of, what is that, B-O-L? Near that, that area where we actually have some water that exits the soccer complex in that area where the river has kind of pushed, wanted to go this way, and then it wants to go back. And so, it's pushed into an area that we're going to try and stabilize as well on the west side.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Ron Graber as well?
Any questions, Mr. Graber? Okay, thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment today?
Donald Whitman, 317 East Prescott. I have known that river for 65 years. And at one time, along most of the river, before they had the cutoff to make it go straight over there by Burke Park, that river was 20-foot wide and anywhere from five to 10-foot deep, and it had a good current. And there were trees, most generally, along both sides of the river, and they were usually quite heavily. And about the only time the tree would fall into the river would be if it was close and erosion from water, like if it was a curve and there was a tree up above there, it eats the dirt away, and then, of course, the roots cannot hold it, and it would fall into the river. And, but with the way the river is now, with having to make a right angle turn from a straight run that we've got now, that river is not going to increase, it's going to worsen, because there is only a four-foot tube going underneath that levee to let the water in to begin with. And without that curve right there, if you walk used to be much deeper than that because we used to be able to take a boat clear on around to where the, from Crawford Street. But when they built that and put the levee in there, they did not put enough in there to stop it because like I said, there is a concrete slab going across there like they were going to put a dam at one time. And without a dam, that water is not going to flow into Salina any faster than what you and I could sit there and pour water from a cup into it because there is hardly no current. So that, that river is not a river anymore. Mulberry Creek and Dry Creek carries much water or more than the river use, is, does, now, so.
Appreciate your comments, Tom.
I'll never get over your going about the river.
Thank you. We still need a vote on this. Uh, is there any other additional public comment? None, all accept a motion.
Mayor, I'd move we award contract for Smokey Hill River Bank Stabilization Project zero nine two seven five four to Smokey Hill LLC in the amount of a hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve, project number zero nine dash two seven five four to Smokey Hill, um, LLC in the amount of a hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Item eight point six, consideration of an agreement for a targeted industry cluster study.
Mr. Gage.
Mayor and Commissioner, she probably always wondered but was afraid to ask what a targeted industry cluster study was, so. Um, in September of last year, you authorized up eighty thousand dollars for this project and the specific scope of services include a, um, an analysis of our community from a competitive aspect, demographic aspect and an economic aspect, look at a regional market, see how that matches up with the various industries that are out there. Um, this is intended to generate, uh, targeted lead information and contacts, a detailed plan with recommendations and detailed development strategies. So rather than taking a shotgun approach, it's really allowing us to be much more strategic in our ability to recruit industry and good paying jobs into our community and build the wealth in our community. It's really what it comes down to. So it's a tool for us. The, the process we used was what we call a competitive qualifications-based approach. We're, uh, worked through the city, worked with our other economic development team partner members, uh, Saline County, the Airport Authority and the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce, and identified a list of those types of firms that do this work, sent a request for proposal out, well, a request for qualifications really out to those firms, received their information, went through that, whittled it down to three entities that we interviewed, uh, two consulting firms and one educational institution. And from there determined that the, uh, the group that we believe can do the, excuse me, do the best job is a site selection group LLC out of Dallas, Texas. We do believe that the, uh, this complies, uh, conforms with our strategic plan. The, the first goal where it addresses the city creating a community of mixed-use quality development redevelopment. Certainly, this is a big aspect of our overall development in our community and we believe that, uh, taking a more strategic approach, that should help us in the long term. The, uh, cost proposal provided is a base cost of thirty-five thousand up to, or not to exceed five thousand for actual travel expenses, so would not exceed that, could be less than that. And if we wanted to add additional industries, they could be added for twenty-five hundred dollars per industry. At this point, we haven't gotten into it enough to know if we'd want to use that or not, so the recommendation basically provides some flexibility there. The agreement's been reviewed by City's Legal Counsel and Risk Management Coordinator and recommended by the SED, SEDIC Committee for Funding. Couple alternatives we have for you and, and the scope of services is included on here and it's pretty detailed and I think you can see that and very specific with regards to timeline for the project. The one alternative is to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Site Selection Group LLC in an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars for the base costs and, and travel expenses for consulting services to include a targeted industry cluster study and authorize staff to add up to four additional industries at a cost not to exceed ten thousand dollars in total for those four. Another option would be to modify that if you weren't interested in adding up, for example, up to the four additional industries, that's fine, you could modify that. Or if you felt for whatever reason that you didn't want to move forward with this study at this time, alternative three provides not to do that. So this, again, this started out as eighty, so we felt that we have a very, very highly qualified consulting group and the price is less, quite a bit less than we anticipated. I don't list on here though, uh, but just to, to remind you also that the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce did agree to fund, uh, half of the cost, I believe up, over a three year period if I'm not mistaken. Staff recommends alternative one, be happy to answer questions and I do believe in the, in the audience, we have those who could help assist me with that and Dennis Lawver with the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce, Tim Rogers with the Salina Airport Authority. I don't, I can't tell with the column if our county administrator's back there. Oh, right there. Rita Deister with Saline County.
Thank you. Questions, staff or anyone else?
Mayor, if it's not apparent, I'm trying to drag this meeting out as long as I can so I don't have to go to Manhattan tonight. Is this a project and, and as I scan through the scope of services where they come in, take an inventory basically of what all the community has to offer, uh, incentives, uh, infrastructure, employment prospects, things like that, and then come back to the various entities and, um, uh, pick specific industries that they think are a good fit for this community?
Absolutely. Uh, part of the scanning will be interviews with those that, uh, business folks and others in the community, but the objective is actually, as you said, they take what they've learned and then they try to match that up for us, uh, with those industries that are best suited for Salina.
Did you say what share the city, county and chamber are all paying for? Is it divided into thirds or how is that being?
It's the, uh, in essence, half of it would be funded by the, uh, special sales tax, the economic development portion of the sales tax. The other half would be funded, I believe, over three years, uh, by the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce.
I'd be interested in a response from Tim or Dennis or Reed on this, but in, in hiring an outside consultant and, and I'm coming from the background of being on the voting end of approving a couple consultants that weren't as fruitful as what I would have liked. And, um, and so I'm, I'm curious, um, number one, once the data is collected and given back to us, um, uh, so what? What do we do with it? What, what are our plans? And, and two, um, uh, you know, in looking at our community, I would look at four individuals, uh, in the crowd right now and say, this is a, you know, they are the people who should know our target industries and know how to go about marketing to them. Um, so what is it that we're doing here? How do we, how do we justify hiring an outside consultant to do the job of, uh, what I would expect others to be able to, to handle?
Dennis Lawver from the Salina Chamber of Commerce. If, if, the other night at the chamber annual meeting and John, I don't know if you were present, but, um, right before Todd Davidson, in my mind, admitted that KU paid their athletes, um, he talked to at length and used the analogy of basketball team and how and why you assemble a team to walk through the logic and the process of doing the industry cluster analysis. And, um, I think that's a legitimate analogy, Aaron. I think it's important for us to understand and have an outsider who's objective to come in, who can see our flaws and, and look and maybe see something that we're missing, but is also in a position, for example, to, to say, well, we know and have the ability to access what your competitor is doing and provide really an objective opinion. What we're not doing is just have somebody come in and say, here's where your clusters ought to be. Do that industry cluster analysis. They are tasked with the next step in the process also, and that is to help us answer your first question. So what? Well, here's what you need to do. Let's say, for example, that, you know, the, the president's budget today, that, that was released today, uh, finally included a substantial amount of money to move ahead with the actual construction of the INBAF facility in Manhattan. Now, one of their clusters perhaps that they come back and say, well, you know, Salina would be well positioned to work with the Kansas Bioscience Authority and work with others and you ought to target, and right now, you know, in a very three thousand foot view, you have a choice, we, it may say, well, let's target, uh, things related to plants that are going to trail out of INBAF. They may say, no, you, you know, there, there will be research and commercialization that will follow related to animals and there will be research and commercialization that will follow related to human beings, all coming out of the INBAF facility. And to help us identify that cluster in light of what they're doing in Manhattan, in light of what's happening in Lincoln, Nebraska, in light of what Topeka, Johnson County, Sedgwick County and others are, are having these same conversations. And then they come back and say, well, this is your particular cluster and we think for the following reasons, Salina can be very competitive. Then they go the next step because right now, I don't know if in our cluster are, and let's say that it's research of animals as opposed to commercialization of plants, research of animals, I don't know if that means those businesses need three acre lots, thirty acre lots, three hundred acre lots. So a qualified outside source to come in and say, this is how you put together the package and really define that is going to be extremely helpful information for us as we move forward to make sure we're building the exact and right kind of target. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Speaking of the annual banquet, Dennis, I would like to take a moment to encourage, uh, the chamber has a newfound interest in North Salina and I would like to make sure that, uh, perhaps the consultants here and the chamber attend some of the north end meetings that have been going on and might be insightful for that portion of Salina for future industry growth, so.
Excellent. And I'm on the agenda for one of the future meetings that Mr. Weiss and I have discussed. I'll be...
I'm glad to hear that.
...in Washington DC with several folks in this room in early March to miss that meeting, but I'm on the agenda to present several aspects associated with that. I believe it, either the late March or the April meeting.
Good.
We, um, I don't know if this is a question or a comment, Tim, maybe, maybe it's a good question for you. Do we need to be concerned with specific areas in Salina that a consultant may focus on and take an easy way out? And I'm picking on you because the Airport Authority is a very easy way out because of the infrastructure and everything that's been put together out there at the expense of a North Salina or some other area in Salina. How do we, I guess, protect ourselves that the entire community's being looked at?
Commissioner, I believe that this, uh, study, uh, builds upon what the Airport Authority has been able to complete in the past year as far as analyzing strengths and weaknesses and identifying target, uh, businesses that we should recruit within the aviation industry, which is a very broad category. So this study would take the work that maybe we've done already, the Airport Authority's completed already with Zimmer Real Estate Services, with James, the James Gregory Consultancy. And how do we focus in on, say, warehouse, warehouse, uh, distribution logistics, get a broad scope of, of, we believe that we're effective in that area in marketing sites and locations within Salina and Saline County because we do have two interstate highways we can access. We do have UP Rail coming through, but what are the segments of that industry that really fit Salina and Saline County? And I think we get down to the targets and going back to what the Airport Authority's completed, I just have a, a competition analysis by Zimmer Real Estate Services that looks at ultimately one hundred and ninety-six like and similar airport, airport industrial centers. And it gives us an indication of how we do stack up against other parts of the country and the nation in areas as far as available space, existing buildings, develop, development lots available, uh, labor, workforce demographics. Then it tells us where we can go within a segment of prospective businesses and industries to go directly to them and do the rifle shot instead of the shotgun approach. I believe we, my, my request will be that this consultant comes in and not try to duplicate what's already been done, really go to those other sites, other areas of the, the city and the county that have great potential, but how do we find the right industry, the right segment industry, both by specific businesses and industries that are looking for projects and site selection consultants that are working on finding locations for industries we don't know about yet. And also they're working through the Kansas Department of Commerce to give better information to Commerce so they can highlight those sites in working in partnership with the Salina Chamber. It's a tool that, that, that I know has been effective for the Airport Authority, having better strengths and weaknesses analysis and the research done. It's a tool that seems to have been very success, very helpful for other communities to have some success. The one, the one area that I, that over time that really is a waste of time and energy is the, is the, just go out to everybody and try to broadcast where a good place to be. You have to get to the decision makers, to the chief operating officers, to the chief financial officers, to companies that may not even thought of Salina and Saline County yet, but once they see the information that we have and we've done our homework about why we are a good location, then, then we're working with them before they've announced a project to, to the rest of the nation or maybe the world. So those are some of the parts of this, benefits of this type of work, that it helps your staff and the, the city and the partnership, city, county, Airport Authority and Chamber to actually do a better job at what, uh, what we're, what we're charged to do. I think to your original question, sometimes we're too close. We're too close to see, you know, that, you know, that is not a good segment of industry to be marketing to or recruiting towards. You should be over here. You should be more realistic as far as the size and types of facilities that bet, best fit our community and building size, development lots available, available labor, workforce training, avail, prevailing wage rates and items like, uh, specific criteria like that. So that's what we gain out of this, out of this type of study.
Very quickly, uh, you need to follow up with?
I'd go in with another question.
Okay, I've got another question as well, but it kind of ties in.
Yes.
I mean, today, I think back to, I mean, we're, this is kind of a two, a two-way street here and obviously large industries and companies also have their services looking at communities that fit their business.
Right.
Now, today we've had some and we've made the shortlist for some of those companies and industries, but we've yet to hit a home run with any of them.
Correct.
So if they're coming to us, uh, and, and we don't seem to be hitting the home run, I don't know how the game changes by us going to them.
It improves your chances. You're just, you're just multiplying, providing additional chances. Let's take the example of James Gregory and doing the specific recruiting and marketing for the Aviation Service Center for aviation businesses, east coast trips, west coast trips. He's making, because we've been able to identify through a specific analysis and type of project for aviation-related business, we've been able to identify companies that would be a good fit because of the number of employees, the type of work that they do, and we have projects, interest and we're responding back to them because we've made a call, uh, you know, unsolicited call, we've made a call on them. So it, it is a two-way street. You have to have your, your call, your, your prospects come in and contacting the community through the Department of Commerce or directly through the chamber or some, by some way calling up and saying, we're interested in information, but we have to be going out to the, to the other businesses too. But just not standing at a trade show booth and just handing out cards. It's going into the CEO, tracking down, literally James Gregory has tracked down the president, CEO of a west coast aviation operator, had followed him to three different locations when, on his trip and because he was, because that business was on our list. And he was not going to leave California until he got, tracked somebody down. And it's proved a benefit to us at this point in time.
Mayor, a couple other points to complement that. One thing is, is the prospects that we've had were, well, first of all, they're somewhat limited in number primarily because most of them have come actually through the state Department of Commerce system. There hasn't been a direct relationship from, from, with our community to those prospects. So that's limited us, I believe, in our competitiveness. This will help that. We've talked about competitiveness and, and I'd like to think that all of us and our staff team are, are at least average, you know, in our abilities, but, but quite honestly, there's some aspects of this, some of them are somewhat academic in which the, the company we're using has the time and the expertise to maybe hopefully tell us at the time and the expertise to hopefully tell us at least what we know, maybe some things we don't know, because what we can provide is a little bit more anecdotal than than really based on the information. They have access to data, data meaning industries. They have more access than we have to that data to be able to link us together. The key of this is on page, in my opinion, is on page four. There's a lot of things they're going to do for us of strategies. But the key of this is, on page four at the very top under marketing plan, it says, identify 10 to 20 target companies within each target industry inclusive of the following information. Okay, each industry, we get four for the base price if we add $2,500 for additional industries on the scope of services. I'm sorry, page four, on the scope of services. The base price gets us four industries, industry types is what it's talking about. Okay, if we add up to four, that's up to eight. So you have anywhere from 10 to 20 businesses per industry. So what this does is it links us up with specific information about companies that we might not ever know are out there or know of. It links us up with those companies. So it helps us to create the one-on-one relationship that right now we don't have, and we have to rely on it coming through the the State Department of Commerce, and we don't want that. We don't want to rely on the State Department of Commerce. We want to have, we want to be more active than that. That's the biggest part for me in this.
And forgive me, this might be in here, and I didn't, I didn't, haven't seen it, but in looking and identifying those target companies or industries, do they actually go so far as to evaluate whether or not that company is growing or expanding?
Actually, I might try to tackle that if this is helpful. Part of the things that are identified in the scope are shift-share analysis and some academic things that I've recently had to do through grad school on a microcosm level, but they are data crunching, as Jason mentioned, and they are what you spoke to. They identify sectors that are growing, sectors that are contracting, and also looks at our balance relative to other communities. So it says, we're low in this particular industry sector, and we have room to grow. So it's more of a, an objective and statistical analysis than a subjective, well, you've got a strength here, in my opinion, you could exploit it. It's a way to look at us statistically, to identify the growth patterns of particular sectors, and then try to capitalize on them.
So there's, I mean, I understand how you can identify a growth sector. My question is, if we, they can identify 10 to 20 companies pretty easily, if those companies have no interest or, you know,
Yeah.
no intention of actually building another facility anywhere, it doesn't do us much good. Do they, do they do any evaluation with regard to that?
The examination process that the city, the county, the chamber, and the Airport Authority went through, as we weeded through all of the different qualifications that were turned back in, and then as we did interviews, and then as we checked references, what we heard back from the folks that had used the parties, each of the parties we interviewed, they all said the same thing. They delivered the kind of information like you were asking about. If we had, if they had given, if Site Selection Group had given the firms that they had worked before, worked with, or the cities they'd worked with before vague answers, they probably wouldn't have been asked for a, an interview. And it wasn't just a case of, well, we only check their references. I mean, I went and and checked with multiple cities.
Okay.
And beyond just where they said, well, you know, call the folks in community X. Well, I went to community Y, Z, and W, and even just last night, I was reading, I need to get a life. I was reading a 40-page report that Site Selection Group put together for the area between the Iowa-Missouri border and the Iowa-South Dakota border along Interstate 29, through City Iowa, down to Council Buffs, down to the Missouri border, and the industry cluster analysis, competitive analysis, any information they had put together. So it is that level of detail, otherwise we wouldn't have.
Okay. And from the time that this study were to be approved is completed, this is a tough question, but what kind of, you know, if this went as well as it could, and there was a couple industries or companies that we thought were a real good fit, what kind of a timeframe would you like to to see that, you know, we landed such and such company? I mean, if everything worked out well. When do we start? When would you like to see tangible results?
That's a tough question, because, for example, there's, frankly, there's been a lot of talk with a lot of communities, back to the example I gave earlier. Gosh, the INBAF facility's coming. Not all of that growth's going to occur in Manhattan. We can get our act together, position ourselves very well as a community, so we're at the mercy of Congress to finally approve all of the money that they can move forward. In the case of the INBAF facility, it's 2016 before that facility would open. So I'd like to think that we'd be in a position where we'd have a tangible real estate market-ready property developed, certainly maybe 12, have a game plan in 13, and begin to market that. You know, your point about stuff out at the airport, John's point about, you know, it'd be easy, well, look at the airport. But if you need rail, and if you were, if we were going to end up targeting an industry that needs even 80-acre pads of land that are rail-served, we're really limited in Salina. We have an option of 150 acres of rail-serve land, and we own free and clear 40 acres of land. We need some guidance and help to help us figure out, how do we turn that into, well, it's nice that we have that land, into a real asset that allows us to do our thing better, which increases the odds of us winning.
Yeah. Mayor, I'd like to see, this is about a four-month process, and so if we get started, let's say, March, March, April, May, June, I'd like to think that we should be able to take the information and start some aggressive marketing in the latter half of the year, and it'd be nice to have some some fairly warm prospects actually starting to develop by the end of this year. I think that's a reasonable expectation with that stage of the game. The issue of, you know, shovel-ready sites and all that is really a separate issue that they may very well reaffirm that we're already working on, but I'm not sure that really relates directly back to this part of it. The other thing, too, on the anecdotal, I kind of thought about is, it wasn't too many, too long ago that one of the things in this community they thought was really important was this question of the permits and inspection. I think we've made great strides in that, and we've received a lot of compliments for that, and so I'm happy about that. So it was important for this community. But but if you go back and you look in some of these trade journals in the in the industry about this stuff, when you look at those top 10 things they're looking for in a community, that's usually in the bottom four, which is interesting. So it's important for us. We did what we needed to do. It was an important policy issue, but in the in the scheme of attracting industry and recruiting industry from across the country, how important was it? These folks, because they deal both with the private side and with the site development side, can bridge that and really tell us what they believe, what they see out there is truly important, help us focus in. We certainly won't let that part slide, the permits and inspection, but they'll help us really know what that is.
I certainly trust your guys' judgment on the consultant, and I think for the city's share, if we can potentially land one new business from this in the next six to eight years or sometime in that timeframe, I think it's it's money well spent. I just, I just hope that we take the data, use it well, and, you know, put that money to good use.
I appreciate the questions, because it allows for an education on the issue. Thank you.
Further questions, staff? Thank you, guys. Is there any public comment?
I'll make one more comment. He's talking about bringing in industries into town. I think actually, if you get to looking at it, the north side of town has got 170, got 70 going one way and 135 the other way, which would make it very easy for transportation of what they were making rather than using the airport. And we've got plenty of land on the north side of town that could be used for that purpose, and they also have easy access to both roads, which are well-traveled anyway. So I think, looking, basically, look all the way around Salina and see which way looks like it would be best, in the best place to put something.
Yeah. Yeah, that's that's exactly what's going to happen. Thanks, Don. If there's no further public comment, accept a motion.
Mayor, I would move that we authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Site Selection Group LLC in the amount not to exceed $40,000 for consulting services to include targeted industry cluster study and authorize staff to add up to four additional industries at a cost not to exceed an additional $10,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we authorize myself to enter into an agreement with Site Selection Group LLC in an amount not to exceed $40,000 for consulting services to include a targeted industry cluster study and authorize staff to add up to four additional industries at a cost not to exceed an additional $10,000. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. Is there any other business? If not, we'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. We're adjourned.
Throughout the night and next day to finalize the productions for the Evening Curtain, the 24-hour